I believe it is to require the United States of America to declare all which stands voidation and under guard into the sole of liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to please?
The only thing I had Kim was undercover comment. We had, please see the video. We really can't do that, we've written it. Uh, okay. Just because that's not, these go into historical records. I'll come back. Can you say what it's about?
Yeah.
A little week after, right?
Yeah. But I do have one comment, it's from tonight, and I need... I am going to make a motion to have the minutes sealed for five years because of the in their, in their suite repetition of the number board. Is that a second? It wrote called Roxanne, yes, Tracy, yes, Paul, yes.
Right here.
You want to sign a little, on the spot?
Yep, I'm gonna sign.
Mike, can you stop up in the office and sign in the MS 1412, Tim?
Yes, I'm tomorrow before whatever.
Okay. Yeah, because Rob will need this back and she needs to file the mistakes and we're wanting to get ready to do the assessments for the second task. Property, tax credits and exemptions, we have one, two, three, four veterans, one stroller, and one elderly deception, all recommended. Can you read this underlies?
Yes.
Yep. I mean, you want to make a motion on Roxanne, are you open for work?
Um, not yet. That's all right.
I mean, this comes with the recommendation of, uh, I have time. You want it, or you don't? I'll make a motion to to accept the property tax and credits and exemptions. I'll sign with that. Same score, neutral. Mike, we'll put those in the folder for them to be signed also. So, we, so why maybe more should I second round? All in favor? The structure on Palm Hill?
Uh, I don't know about this.
Mike, do you know anything about this?
I have no road design.
Palm Hill? Oh, I think this was the one that, we'll table, this was the one that Tim came back to Robert, who's doing services.
Yes.
That's why it's available. So, we'll table that until next meeting. Insurance in regards to vehicles being used? I thought we addressed this already, that's what I wanted to tell you.
So, he also sent an email saying he, um, was supposed to be getting policy this week.
ZBAA liaison? Oh, Mike, sorry.
What did I say?
ZBAA liaison?
I don't have anything right now. I, I sent a message, I haven't heard anything back yet. When I was in the office the other day, I saw something in my mailbox, but that wasn't pertaining to that issue, so, um, I'm just waiting for a phone call back.
Fine. And Cunningham Security. I don't know what you mean about this one either. Mike, do you know about this one, Cunningham Security?
I don't know anything about that one. I know you guys discussed it a few meetings ago, and I think it was just trying to get an update of where we're at, whether we're going to move fire service back online or not, and kind of where that's been.
Okay, why not the next meeting? Containment business, emergency management.
Oh.
Oh, um, I have.
Yeah.
So, there's nothing to report on emergency management, but I will report on the fire day, and that's the twenty calls for service, nine medical aid responses, two M-joyed ambulances from Farmington, EMS billed at five thousand two ninety-five, EMS red leaves were four thousand one sixty, Forestry Two responded to afternoon from outside fire, Forestry Two and Chief Lilo responded twice to Armington in two consecutive days for outside fires, uh, one with the UTBs, and we will do, uh, clean handle, limelight calls for me, we go outside burning during the elevated fire danger, and this past weekend's running fire danger has been lowered, and burning with a permit is not allowed in town. It is now, and I'll start to try to allow it. Is that for a living for the year?
No, any for the month.
Just for the month. The Highway Department, I have there, um, from August twelfth to September eighth, gravel on New Durham Road Hill, with New Durham Highway Department, gravel on the Rose Jordan Beach Tree Holiday Estates in Lincoln, clean truck out, tanked out on scrape it down. Scrap shoulders on steering lane, vehicle washout on the lane, replaced stop sign on Burger Mac, gravel living road, put up big flag, intake dam at Wolfhound Day, prep tux for touch truck, load schedule into school's fines, always appreciated, gravel the dirt road Lincoln hole, Maple Cameron Lane, Gary Spruce, order new signs for New England. There, where's that? New England Avenue? Yeah. I don't know, sorry. Oh, okay. Oh, baby, that's a hell of a number. Um, the L's on vacation, grease the trucks number twenty and twenty-four, grease tobacco, cut bushes around signs and lifelands, mow lawns as needed, check beach, uh, Calico Oil, that's still out, right?
Yeah.
Walmart room for paper goods and cleaning, took pump ratings, um... Police?
All right, Chief Ferguson with Police Department, uh, for the month of August, we had, uh, about three hundred calls for service come in through traffic, kind of dispatch, of that we had fifty-nine incidents, uh, that were investigated and looked into or handled, uh, one motor vehicle accident and thirteen, uh, set motor vehicle citations or warnings were issued. Again, we continue with training, uh, to keep everybody, uh, in their needs of the twenty-four hours, so we're doing a lot of in-house, online training, short, you know, one hour blocks, but each officer is required to, to, to tabulate twenty-four hours each calendar year at this point. Uh, the air conditioning unit fixed and repaired, uh, that turned into a little bit of a project, it was, of course, for a few days, resulted in us having to alter schedules and what have you, just to give them access, to get them in there and take care of that. Spent quite a bit of time this past month, the month of August dealing with different vendors and what have you, with as far as the purchases and changes of firearms, so on and so forth. Conducted background investigations for employment, uh, state inspections were conducted on all the cruisers, worked with the, uh, local HOAs in and around the Lakes Districts, uh, with some issues that they're having down there, doing certain, uh, HOAs down there, so we worked with them, met with their boards, some of their board members from the different ones, and, uh, we're working on, trying to come up with a good rep, remedy, uh, to keep all parties happy as far as issues down there. And Officer Hutchins, uh, was released off initial phase of FTO, which is now on solo status, so.
Stop, have you found anything more about, um, this on Sausage? In the forest, or you could...
Oh, yeah, that's, so that's, I'm gending that now? I think that was at the last meeting that we discussed that. But yeah, that's, that's all in, on my plate now, um, she's rather busy, um, so we talked, and I told her that I'd, I'd gander it, and she, she was fine with that. Um, so that's still an active, active investigation at this point, but there has been communications with the, uh, with the offender, we'll continue to, uh, move forward with the investigation.
Thank you.
Good question.
Sure.
What firearms they looking to purchase right now?
So, we currently have P320s and we're looking to purchase P320s.
Is the P320 the one that just had the recall for unintentional discharge?
Uh, they had a recall in two thousand seventeen, yes.
Are those the ones we currently own?
Yep. Well, we don't, I think that, that, we don't own two thousand and seventeen model year. The gun itself came out two thousand thirteen. They had the recall in two thousand and seventeen, it was a voluntary recall, um, but the weapons that we currently have, uh, are later year than that.
And we're going to what weapons do?
We're still going to the same weapon.
You are, okay.
As far as property, as of though, we still have many over the deposit, any funds there, it's only a recuminality that's completed, and it's, we have no idea, how quickly we're going to do that. About the town website, we did a hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty-seven gun, yeah, a hundred and five thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-three cents total revenue for the month. And majority of it, as usual, staff, motor vehicle registration, or I should say, we chanted that, we did get, uh, forty thousand dollars from sale of the municipal property, which I believe was a fire.
Yep.
And, grand total of all fees and everything was a hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars, and they were nonsense. That's it.
So, we have nothing from treasure or code? John, mom, you're up.
Whoa. Three, four, chair, light. Pleasant chair. You, that is for you. Bring the exception, see you. What I'm here tonight to talk about is to continue, uh, talking about our stormwater control measures on the lake, uh, in, in regards to our grant for projects on the lake. And what I'm here tonight is to ask for some of your support on materials and labor, and I understand, uh, that, uh, there is, uh, some discussions about utilizing town equipment and how you're going to use that, however you work that out, we appreciate helping us out, so, just a brief description, this is pretty detailed in here, I'm not going to go through the whole book, but it's a, excuse me, it's a review of what you've seen in the past, where the project is, what the project is. Now, there are basically two projects, and this is project one, and this is the culvert and the Lake Land Beach culvert area, and I call the beach area, which is right here, this is Lake Shore Drive, okay, this is the beach, the problem stated in the book, overflow water coming down during heavy events and raining, hitting, flowing over the finger and washing the beach, sand out. What does that do? Sand is a containment when it goes into water, what we're trying to do on stormwater control measures is reduce nutrients that flow into the lake, so, that's one A. One B is to reconfigure a culvert, there's a, I don't know, this is a creek that is pretty full when it rains heavily, I didn't look at it yesterday, I'm sure it was running pretty good, but what has happened in the past is, the culvert comes down here, and currently it is, um, covered with a, this is a plastic culvert, and it comes right down here, and this is a, the current system is a metal culvert that's rotted out, so what does that cover? The overflow here, this can't take the flow, the water comes down here, it goes onto the beach, and goes in here, full rushing right into the lake, so there's two things that happen in a storm. Water can come down here, through this area here, and there's another, uh, on this other road over here, which I believe is Maple Beach, and the water will come in here and just speed it, and it just shoots right down there, and that dish right down is probably four feet wide, and when the water's really running bad, it can be six feet, about four feet deep, so the purpose of the project is to slow it down, so it doesn't go anywhere. Project two is Hampshire Shores Rain Garden, and we'll get into that in a little bit. What we're looking for, and we've, we're working with other, um, entities within the community, uh, to help us supply some materials, and what we're looking for is donation material. The grant does not cover everything, so some of the projects, let's, let's talk about this first project here, which is the beach, and the beach is called the Lake Land Beach List, and this is the, some of the materials that the engineer has said we need to have. Some of these materials, um, according to the grant, it does have some of them, and we're asking if you can supply some of those for us. So, um, there's fifty cubic yards of inch and a half washed stone, we're working with other people to see if we can get help with that, we're not asking for the whole thing, let's get some help. Three-eighths inch washed stone for the rain garden, uh, we are working on silk fences, we have an asphalt curb that, um, we believe will be donated for the whole thing, so that's not necessary. Saw mixture, we'll work on that one, bulk mulch, fifteen cubic yards, that's nothing. Native plants, we'll work on that, um, we have a, um, a company, an entity that said they could help us with that, it hasn't been defined yet, so, if the town can, and this project one and two can help us supplying this material, so far, what we're looking for is, we have, the project is about a hundred thousand dollars. We, the town, Sunrise Lake, the grant has to spend, has to supply about forty grand. So, right now, we are with just our meetings and education, these type of things, we're up over half, we're fifty-five percent of that, so all we're looking for is another twenty thousand dollars of in-kind meeting donations from the town, if you can do it, and other sources. So, Lake Land, here, this is just basically rain garden, stone, um, the equipment that's required, and I'll talk about Lake Land hours, and this is, this is mostly handwork, some excavation, like backhoe, if somebody would do that, or if the town could provide some time to dig that out, that would be helpful, uh, some more back, this is the backfill, which is listed over here, putting this in, handwork, uh, the association over at Lake Land has committed to volunteers to come help when we get to the point where we're going to need handwork. So, that's number one, that's the beach. Beach, the second part, which is what we call the culvert part, and over here, this is where we're eating up some of our resources. We're going to have to hire, uh, and we're going to have to buy a four-inch pre-passed concrete manhole. Now, right now, that's a twenty-four inch manhole, the purpose of that is, that would be placed right here at the end of the culvert, we're carrying this, tearing the old one out, and we're going to put this here, and what this does, it takes the water, it slows, when it comes in, it slows it down, puts it in a big, like, hole, and then it lets it exit out to a pipe, and then the pipe goes to the head wall, and then it goes out, that continues to slow the water down. We, the engineers and Stratford Regional Planning, which is administering this control, has, we're going to have to get a contractor to put this pipe in, so, town doesn't have the resources or the expertise to do that, so we're going to have to hire that out, and we're figuring that's about, we don't know yet, we're, we're working with some people to see if they can give us some help on that, the culvert, or the, uh, the manhole, four thousand bucks, I'm sorry, two thousand bucks, uh, this thing here to dig it up, or maybe four, we don't know, uh, we're still working on that. So, in terms of the culvert, this part here, again, we're looking for, um, the materials, we're going to, we're going to, we have to buy some of this stuff, so we're not, silk fence, we can get someplace, somebody can donate silk fence, we think, in terms of the labor, chainsaw, we've got people that volunteer, like cutting down the trees, uh, installing fences, handwork, excavation, we're working with a couple people about utilizing their own, um, excavation equipment, but if you can do it, that would be great, uh, that would not, the excavation for this work here would require a pretty good size machine. Town doesn't have one, we have other people that do, that possibly could volunteer, at least at a lower rate anyway, so, this, this is where the, this is where, um, the cost for us is, and the labor, labor is minimal, it's a lot of backfilling, hauling, that would be one thing that we look for, if you can provide hauling, let's say, let's say you're able to give us some gravel, and you take the truck up there, fill it with gravel, and we take it to the site, dump it wherever we've got to do, and use it, that's what we're looking for. That's what we're looking for. The Hampshire Shores. Hampshire Shores has dedicated, correct, of doing this project. The whole thing. All we might have to do is supply some materials, which is gravel, some fabric, which we can get, dump trucks for hauling of mulch, gravel, that kind of stuff. We might need some help there. But we're working with some other people, having firm that up in terms of what that individual might be able to supply. So what I'm here for tonight is what can you commit to, or at least generally commit to offering equipment, man hours, and materials? And it's all explained in that booklet. Let me go through the booklet quickly, the parts now. We did have to fill out a permit, shore land permit, for this work. It has been submitted and has been accepted. So it was accepted Friday. So within the next 30 days, they'll have a decision, yes or no. 90%, 90% will be yes. That will be, what, the 4th of October, then we can begin. We would like to get the whole project done, at least this portion, done by the end of October. But the most important thing is the heavy lifting, right here. This, this manhole, you know, laying in the pipe. If we can't do this until spring, we'll wait till spring. Same thing down here, they probably will not be able to get to that maybe. But to line up a pipe, what they call a pipe contractor, from what I'm told, they're very busy and they're very tight on their schedule. So we're trying to get a commitment from a supplier, if he can do that, we haven't gotten that yet. So what I'm here tonight to is ask you, what can you do? And if you want to look over that a little more detail, and let us know later, we can certainly understand, that's a lot of stuff there. I know you've been working on the insurance thing and how you work that, but we hope that you can help us out. And this is an important project. This is a stormwater control measure project, and stormwater control, because the water up here is really coming down, and this is just the beginning of our stormwater control project. So we've got 10 years to try to reduce the pollution. This was the biggest one that came to mind, right off the bat, because of the water flow. This project up here in the beach, what we're putting up here is three big rain gardens. And the water flow coming down over the road, you can see in your little booklet there where the water flow comes. These rain gardens, these are pretty big rain gardens. These are 31 by 21. That's a big rain garden. And that should take a lot of the water that comes down here, flows down here, and it goes down this concrete ramp and goes into the water also. So then there'd be another rain garden here. The parking lot is here, this is a sandy beach. And then here is another rain garden, which will take flow from here, so that'll slow that down. This will prevent and slow the water down when it comes to heavy rain events, so that it doesn't overflow in here and then just gush right out with a lot of debris and a lot of pollutants. We're seeing not good numbers here in terms of nutrients that are flowing, or bad stuff. So we test the water three times a year. And we tested this ditch here, and we tested the water out here, so we can do that. So please take a look at it. Please let us know as soon as you can what you can do for us. We'd appreciate it. If you have any questions, you know where to go, right?
We got your number.
You got my number. All right.
Madam Vice Chair, may I ask a gentleman a question?
You may.
Do you test for the salt, salt, road salt content?
No, we're testing water quality. So we're testing the water for phosphorus, nitrogen, clarity, E. coli. There's, the state, we have what we call a volunteer lake assessment program. And they have certain things that we test. I can give you, I can send you, let me know, and I can send you the data of what we test. Some of the results, I think the last result is on the town website under Watershed. We're not, we're not testing for salt at this time. However, that will be something in the future in terms of reducing salt on roads, because that does affect water quality. Because for me, in ACL, salt is bad. It never goes away, stayed right in the water.
You mentioned the use of chainsaws. I know the Comprehensive Shoreland Protection Act has very strict rules about cutting trees along the shore. Are you working with the Department of Environment and services?
Yes. We've submitted a wetlands permit, shore land permit, for this right here, okay? This will require some removal of trees to redo the ditch. That is in the application. If you want to see the application in turn, you want to write this down. It is on the web, it's on your sheet, it's on your sheet. I mean, it's in your booklet. It's on, this is the notification right here.
Are you working with the Nash Lakes Association?
What's that?
Are you working with the Nash Lakes Association?
Indirect. This particular project is a project that the Sunrise Lake Watershed Advisory Committee...
That's who you are.
That's who we are. We work under the auspices of the Conservation Commission.
I see.
We contracted Stratford Regional Planning to create a, what, a Sunrise Lake Watershed Management Plan. We got the plan approved, so then we submitted another grant for, to start implementing projects. So we have a D E S representative that is on this project. She's out of Portsmouth, worked with her through the whole process, from the grant process all the way through. So you are correct, there are several rules and regulations about removing trees and so forth and so on. So the permit describes everything that has to be done. So now it's under review. And if they have comments, what we've done here is we've asked for a quick review and approval, which means when we filed an immediate shore land permit, which requires D E S to make a decision in 30 days, usually 45 days and beyond. And what we, we feel our application fully describes the project and exactly what we're going to do, material lists, we've done wildlife studies and water shed studies and all that kind of stuff.
You know, I want to suggest that the OSB Aggregates, and very generous to the OSB Conservation Division, you might want to ask them to donate maybe gravel, I don't know, to train to box the dam gravel.
We'll do that.
They're very, very ethnologically friendly and conscious, and they were very generous, they're very, very generous too.
Well, we will get up and talk.
It's worth a try.
Sure. What you're looking for...
If someone from the public would like to donate, when's your next meeting?
Our next meeting is September 17.
Beginning of last, last Thursday of September. So please come. If you have more questions or suggestions, we're open for those. If you have equipment that you'd like to donate to the project, you've got time, we'd love to have you, so would the town. You got a question?
Can some of that, like the culvert maybe, and the structures and stuff like that be bought through, like, a state contract pricing?
We're trying to get it either contract pricing or lower or...
It should be at least a state pricing through your pipe constructions, and Dan should have that information, who got that contract.
Yeah.
It changes all the time.
Yeah.
Who was the bid?
He's, he's looking at a couple sources, like, sir, he's going to sir to see if they have maybe one of those sitting in the yard. But I'll talk to him about the state and, and that kind of stuff. So I'll talk to him about that.
And do you know what type of pipe is going out of that basin? Is that going to be down with plastic pipes?
I don't know without looking at the specs, what, what is actually called out in the engineering spec. Greg, if you want, I have a copy here of the whole plan. I can give it to you, you can take a look at it. You got any suggestions, we'll take them.
I just wanted to know what the pipe was, you know, versus a smooth board versus a ripple. You're talking about flow, obviously the smoother, the faster it will flow.
Yes. That's...
I'm sure we designed it...
We're not changing, we're not changing this culvert pipe here. We're not doing anything there. Oops, I'm sorry. We're not, this is under the rope.
I'm sorry, Greg.
We're not touching that. This, this comes and this attaches to a metal pipe. Sometimes someone, nobody seems to know.
They do.
Well, I don't know.
That's all we're allowed to do, John.
It looks to be, looks to be like, no offense here, but it looks like to me, plastic has not been around that long. Right, I mean, it's, so Lake Shore was repaved a few years ago.
Yep.
I don't know if this was put in there, but this is all underground. There's nothing exposed, so it comes down to about here, that's where that 24-inch, it's, it's rotted out. I'll show you. It's rotted right out.
Why, we're...
So I'll, I'll, I'll ask Dan about what you requested. I mean, we're letting him kind of see what he can dig up and who's promised to do that. We've got a couple lists out, a couple of our suppliers, like Pipe is pretty sure going to give us the asphalt for, we've got some asphalt farms we're going to put up. He doesn't feel that would be up there, just do it for us, so. All right, didn't need to take so much time. Any other questions?
I just, Cindy DeCristofaro, I am the current president of the Hampshire Shores Association, so I just want to kind of second, and I'm also a member of the Watershed Committee. And so I just want to second, you know, the support that the, our association has for the Watershed project and to let you folks know that, you know, we are committed to the project as well. And so we're hopefully be able to get what we're asking for from the town, so just move forward. Because it's our understanding, if we are successful in this project, the likelihood of us getting future grants increases with our success on this.
Yes. Because of this project here, we've already submitted another request for a grant to do a stormwater evaluation of the town. Then we will continue to tack onto those more things. So let's say that stormwater, it'll just be a survey of your stormwater in the town. Let's say that survey says, okay, you need to change this culvert, you need to change that culvert. Then we go for another grant, 319 grant, do that. What does that do? That's a match, another match thing. That reduces the cost of the community, but also helps with stormwater management and reduce the nutrients flowing into our assets on the nice lake. All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Rep? So I have talked briefly with Jim, and we have these trees out here that are pretty dead-looking. We're going to meet with June Brown, and we have talked to, a member of my rec has talked to the field, and they've given permission for us to cut them down. Their approval, I should say, their approval to cut them down. I've talked, like I said, with Jim, and talked with him a bit more, and we'd like permission from his landlord to do something with them. I do have a couple of people that have offered to donate trees, and we need to reach out to them again, but we'd like to know if this is a no, we can do something like this, we can get everything lined up for us.
Yeah, I don't think...
Yeah, one kind of tree, but... I'm not sure yet, something that's not going to go over the range, I hope. So that's going to be the next thing. We have a member in town who is going to be decorating our station for Christmas and putting up lights and doing our house decor in the contest this winter. And he's a lot of lights and wants to help out, let the town a little bit. The rec would like to do, the voice scouts are doing the cleanup that path, the lights there. And we'd like to do a light up walk through there for Christmas time. So some of that is school property, but some of it is also town, so we want permission from the local community to do that.
I don't think there's permission from the town side, if you just need to get...
Yeah, that's what we will be doing together. Hopefully we can do these generators. We have to check out, there is some power to the shed, but we don't know that it's announced, so we probably can't open the generators. We're checking it all out. Voice scout is going up there next weekend and starting cleaning it up, so if anybody wants to come out and help with, I think it's level 11 to 3, something like that, needs looking for helpers to start cleaning up the path going from the municipal building to the school. And this is a big voice scout project that he's doing.
Yes, I think an eagle scout.
Yeah, an eagle scout project, yeah. And we'll be at the school, I think Wednesday night to present to them as well. What are you going to do at the school?
So we have one that did, that has all the signatures. We have two new hires in the fire, so we just need to sign their personal forms. And then there was, in fact, the state and the Hampshire Department of Revenue Administration, they do an audit every three years. We're just getting the results from a 2023 audit, who are guiding its assessments. And so there were three areas that we were not fully, I wouldn't say we're deficient, but we were not fully in compliance with. So we're going to work with Robin on that. The first one was the land use, changed cats' bills. That's bills that go out for people who change, really change their name from current use back into regular. So she's working on that to make sure that somehow their bills, their bills that didn't, I guess, get sent out or they got lost or whatever. So we're following, have to make sure that those get resubmitted. And the second one was the veterans credit. Those have to be reviewed every five years, just to make sure that the people who claim the tax, veterans tax credit still on the property, still with their permanent resident. And then the third one is the elderly. So she's going to want those in phases to get those, to get that situated, and then the next audit will be on the 20th, I guess. But we're just, yeah, not getting too much of our results.
Couple of comments?
Yeah, I was...
Maybe some...
Oh, yeah, Kevin.
I didn't know it was person.
That's sort of on the, what kind of trees are you cutting down?
Um, there's two big trees out, Yonkers, right?
That is...
I think they're kind, they're really big, and they're quite dead-looking.
Right, it's not the main.
Yeah.
So that was all in favor and all...
Well, we just want to make sure that's going forward, but they're going to do it going forward.
Yeah.
When we finally decide.
And the current use, now, what is the protocol for when you take something out of the current use? Do you have to pay 10% of the assessed value or...
Current market, I believe it's 10% of the current market value. And that's sent out, that's, that's a whole process between the assessment department and the town court task force at his office, so we're just following up on that.
Right.
Yeah.
Just wondering if we had any answers on the breeder at all? Have someone come look at that, find out if it's not good or why we're not using it? You just mentioned this spread gravel all over town. Was that spread with a load of it? Have we just rebuilt the bucket on it?
At the last meeting, I didn't hear any motion to have anybody look at that.
I think Mr. Trump mentioned, I think.
I didn't mention that. I had also contacted Libby Industrial over in San Juanville. He said if I gave Timmy a car, I don't know if he's got it, I got a car from, that he would be interested in coming over to the pit. He's got the big heavy equipment truck. He said it could ride through it and tell them exactly what's wrong with it, so. He's probably the only one in the area that would do something like that.
For me, right?
Huh?
For me?
I'm, I'm not sure. He's, he was supposed to, somebody was supposed to contact him, sure. He's, he was supposed to, somebody was supposed to contact him, so I'm not sure. I gave Timmy the card and I don't know if it was on the, you know, he's supposed to let you know.
May I have a, may I, can I have another question? What's the situation at S U R? I wonder if they're coming back to do this, the rest of their construction, this stuff here?
Yes, I have it on my phone, but I have mine on my phone. Always they, we hold on.
They'll have to have my drive here again.
Will anyone come back to downtown, I'll share the point?
I think I can do this and... Looks like S U R will be here the week of September 15th, so next week, to come finish up the old town hall parking lot. Rep, did you have something else?
Yeah, I know you probably don't have a copy of the 2024 town hall report that I did tonight, obviously, but I already had a white season. Just wondering if the salaries ever show in this book for the highway department? Is that the total salary that they receive for that season? Or does some of them have comp time still under books that they throw out years later?
That would be what's paid out on that. That would match their, what's on their W-2 that goes on the annual year.
But if they save comp time in 2024, that should show up in the report for how much you're actually going to cost us, even though we're going to pay it out as comp time and vacation time or whatever.
We only show what we've paid out for the current budget year. That's what we'd show in there. We wouldn't show what's on there that we have to potentially pay out for next year.
So do they, does any employees have comp time?
Well, at least has comp time, highway has comp time, and any full-time...